Good evening, welcome to the Northampton City Council meeting, the first one of the year for January 3rd, 2013. I'm City Council President Bill White. We will start by public, with public comment. We only have one person signed up, but people are welcome to step up and speak after he speaks, if you're so inclined. We ask that you keep, limit your remarks to three minutes. We understand that if you're just winding up, you're not going to be penalized, but if you go egregiously over, then you'll be ruled out of the way. First up is Paul Phillips of the Lathrip Communities.
Good evening, I'm Paul Phillips. Excuse me, I'm Executive Director of Lathrip Communities. It's a pleasure to be back before you to speak again on behalf of our application to rezone the 716 Bridge Road property from RR to URB. Since 1989, Lathrip has been providing high-quality nonprofit housing and services to older Northampton residents. We are an important community resource, and the demographics are clear that our services will continue to expand as our population ages. We are good neighbors, we provide an important service to older Northampton residents, we pay our fair share of property taxes, and we generate very little by way of service cost in Northampton. Future expansion of our services will not only meet an important social need by providing more opportunity for seniors to stay in the community where they want to be as they age, but it'll also generate additional property tax revenue. Simply put, senior housing is a very good deal all the way around for cities and communities like Northampton. This past summer, the 716 Bridge Road property became available to us. It's a rare opportunity when a budding property like this becomes available. Contrary to what our neighbors have represented, we do not intend to develop dense housing that would be out of keeping with the neighborhood or inconsistent with our existing campus. The fact is that if granted, URB zoning would permit something in the range of perhaps 10 to 12 units on four acres. These would be modestly sized, single-story homes for seniors, designed to be compatible with our existing campus, which we believe since 1989 has fit in very well with the neighborhood. Site design would very carefully address stormwater management issues and would be subject to multiple levels of planning and permitting approval before any final decision about development of the property would be rendered. We're seeking a change to URB zoning so that we have an opportunity to begin preliminary planning and conceptual design work. We believe URB is consistent with the existing campus that we operate and have for many years. We also believe that it's consistent with the goals and principles of sustainable Northampton. With all due respect, we do believe it, it's unfortunate that the deliberations about zoning have been in some ways co-opted by a focus on drainage issues. Technical issues such as drainage and stormwater management should be addressed through the site plan approval and permitting process, not through the zoning process. The question before you is whether you believe URB zoning is appropriate for this property and whether it's compatible with your vision for Northampton's future. By approving a change to URB zoning, City Council would not be approving development of the property. City Council would only be granting approval for Lathrip to explore development of the property that would be subject to very careful and deliberate planning and permitting processes. If concerns about stormwater management cannot be addressed through that process, we would, there would be ample opportunity to deny permitting, and the property would not be developed. If on the other hand, intelligent site design and collaborative effort to resolve existing drainage is successful, there'll be ample opportunity for Lathrip and Northampton to roll out the welcome mat to probably 15 or 20 new seniors that would be very happy to make their home there. I would ask that any decision rendered be rendered not as if this is a planning and permitting decision, because it is not. Please render your decision based on whether you believe URB zoning is appropriate for the property as we seek to expand our services to more Northampton older residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wish to speak in public session? Please provide your name and your address.
Of course.
Yeah, my name's Scott Flynn, live in South Hadley right now, but I'm representing the Northampton firefighters. I just wanted to take a brief moment to reintroduce myself as the President for 2013 going forward. My brother Mike Hatch is through that position, his term after two years, and I just wanted to again, like I said, reintroduce myself to the council. We wanted to take a minute to come here tonight to, you know, hear the comments that are going to be made about the business that pertains to our department, our union, and we thank you for your services. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wish to speak at this time? Counselor Volkman.
Mr. President, councilors, you can see how out of it I am because I forgot that we'd moved to 7:00.[366.13][366.13](Laughter). I wanted to speak just briefly about the request for rezoning for the Lathrip community, which may come up again tonight. I know it has come up before. And I simply wanted to support the change in zoning. I go out to Northampton Lathrip quite a lot because I'm a member of a group called Learning and Retirement that meets out there quite often. And it strikes me as being exactly the kind of development that we should be encouraging in this kind of a location. It's not too dense, there's a lot of green space, it's a very well-maintained, well-kept-up kind of place. It offers real opportunities for people who are getting older, and it's good for our economy, it's good for our community. So I hope you'll move forward on that one. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wish to speak? Okay, well then, Secretary.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor White?
Here.
Counselor Chris Daniels?
Here.
Counselor Yvart?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Spock?
Here.
Counselor Stewart?
Here.
Now, approval of minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And then to accepted. We're now at the point of proclamations, resolutions, awards, and recognitions, and I'd like to have Ned Huntley come step forward to the podium for presentation. Hello Ned.
Hi everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
It's that wonderful time of year again, we just had our Employee of the Year Award. This is our 12th year doing this important program, and this year we had 15 nominations from staff. Even though we couldn't recognize everyone, we did choose one person to be recognized this year. It was interesting because once again, the underlying theme was being dependable and willing to help to staff the city, the residents of Northampton. I did want to thank you, thank Look Park, the Center of the Arts, Smith College, Academy of Music, and Chamber of Commerce for their continued support of this important program to us. Greg's name, Greg, why don't you come on up? Knew you'd get recognized at some point here. Those who don't know him, this is Greg Nuttlemann. He's our chief operator of water treatment plant. He is responsible for the clean water that brings to the citizens and the businesses of Northampton. He's been working up the plant for about a two-year term right now, and he became the chief operator about a year ago. He started with us in 2005 as a part-time reservoir ranger. So he's been in the waterworks side ever since he came to the DPW. Greg's name will also be displayed on the wall at our front entrance with 11 other awardees of the past. And I want to say a couple things about Greg as he was described by his fellow workers. He was described as someone who refuses nothing and has a can-do attitude, takes on added responsibilities as without question, trustworthiness and loyalty, works well with others, and quick to offer assistance. And the one that really struck to me when we were going through this whole process of evaluating all the candidates was inequiteness that is infectious amongst staff, which is really true for him. He knows how to get people going and moving in the right directions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Counsel President.
It's a shame Greg that you couldn't get any family members to come out and support.[602.16][602.16](Laughter). I have here the plaque, and I'm going to read the plaque. For the Employee of the Year, we express our sincere appreciation to Greg Nuttlemann. In grateful recognition of your outstanding performance, productivity, and dedicated service, we award this certificate from the Northampton Department of Public Works, awarded in December 2012. Signed by Ned Huntley, Edward S. Huntley, David Narkowitz. Oh, and Jim LaRula's on here as well, so. Come on up, I'd love to give this to you. Congratulations.[645.29][645.29](Applause).
Congratulations.
Good job again.
Congratulations.
Good job again. Congratulations.
to set up the Committee on Compensation for Elected Officials, which is that the committee that was, that we need to have within 180 days of the ordinance of the charter being approved, because it's an ordinance that said this committee will be set up. So we, we've made some recommendations unanimously, they'll come before you in a few council meetings, but I'd like you, when the, when the meetings are finally approved and you'll see them come down the pike, if you could take a look at our recommendations so we can have a very good and beneficial discussion.
Any other announcements? Counselor Murphy, then Counselor Flynn Daniels?
Two quick ones first, on behalf of the Police Building Committee and the Police Department. Thanks for everybody that came to the open house, it was spectacular. I think it went an hour longer than it was supposed to, there were so many people toward the building, so. And thank you to councilors that came, it was an excellent afternoon and a chance for everybody to say thank you to the citizens for supporting the override to build such a beautiful facility.
Take all your little decorations off the tree before you try to-
Your lights.
Real prosaping suggestions, thank you. Any, any other announcements? No? All right. We have no appointments, no elections for public hearing schedule. The, I will call for recess to Finance, please. And we now seat the Chair to Counsel Murphy to as the Chair of Finance. Mary, could you call the role of Finance?
Counsel Murphy?
Here.
Counsel White?
Here.
Counsel Yvart?
Here.
Counsel Murphy?
Here.
And we only have one financial order on our agenda for tonight, and that would be that $45,000 be appropriated from the FY13 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance or Free Cash to the FY13 Legal Judgments accounts relative to Michael Hatch et al. versus the City of Northampton et al.
Discussion, motion?
I move to recommend.
Move.
Second, all right. The mayor, I think, would like to address us on this matter.
Again, I'm just seeking the, the city council's approval to transfer these funds from the undesignated fund balance, free cash balance into the legal judgments account that will allow me to continue toward a settlement in the matter of Michael Hatch et al. versus the City of Northampton, Massachusetts et al. That account currently does not have sufficient funds to cover that settlement, which is why I need to have the council's approval to move additional funds into it so that we can attempt to proceed with the settlement.
Any discussion? Ready to vote on recommendation? All in favor of a-
Aye.
Recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Is there any business that, is there any financial update? I see Susan's not here tonight, it's Mary. Financial update for us?
The only question I had was that in the Finance Committee, last Finance Committee, there were basically five questions that were asked during that Finance Committee meeting relative to the capital plan. And I have the information in response to those questions. I don't know whether you'd like me to just convey it now, or wait to the regular meeting for each one of those orders, or whether it'd be helpful just to give you the information as the form of an update.
Yeah, the order's on, on the Finance Agenda, you want the mayor to do it when we're voting?
I prefer the mayor doing it now.
Okay.
Is it your preference that if, with this recommendation, if it goes through, if it passes the board of council, that we do two readings?
That would be my request, yes. That would be in the matter of the transfer to the legal settlements account. I would, I would ask for two readings so that we could proceed and not have to wait until, yes. So I just wanted to update you on a cup, on several of the questions that you had in the Finance Committee about the capital plan that I presented. And the questions that were asked, there was a question from Counsel Freeman Daniels about the Green Communities grant for the academy. You had asked how much that was for. That grant was a tot, for a total of $98,000. $61,000 of that was marked for the roof insulation and air sealing at the academy, and the balance was for the air sealing and insulation work at Memorial Hall. So the money in question, you were asking how much of the G, Green Communities money was being leveraged, it's for the academy project, it's $61,000.
Great, thank you.
So that's the follow-up to that. The other question, Counsel Tacey had asked a question about the underground tank removals and whether or not that was something that had been specked out in the ESCO. There was discussion of, there's a contingency fund and the types of things that a contingency, the contingency fund could pay for. So it may have come up in that context. At this point, the focus of, most of the focus of the contingency funds has been to pay for things like asbestos abatements and other environmental engineering. There is a small amount in the contingency left, and what Mr. Pomerantz told me is that the $40,000 that we're asking for, for the removal of the tanks, will do most of the work. They do expect it may go beyond that, and they, and they do intend to use some of that contingency fund as part of the ESCO to help to pay any additional costs above the $40,000. So that's the answer to that one. The other question that you had, counselor, was about the vehicles, the DPW vehicles that were being replaced. The sewer van that you had asked about, you wanted to know what vehicle was being replaced. It's a 1986 one-ton cube van. It currently needs brakes, the brake lines are rotted, and it won't pass inspection. That's the van that they're requesting money through the sewer fund to replace. The other truck, the water truck, that was also on that was, and this is a little bit more complicated, they had a 2004 crane truck that's undersized for its use, and so what they're going to do is buy a 550 truck without a body, exchange the crane body with the new Ford 550, and, but with a regular dump body on the 2004 truck. So they're going to do some moving around to get that crane body on a more appropriately-sized vehicle. So that's, it's a replacement, but it's kind of a two-step replacement of the vehicles. And I believe the final question, I'm just trying, oh, the other question that you asked Counsel Tacey was about the, was about the fire engine apparatus, and you had asked whether or not that we would be keeping Engine 5 if it was replaced, or what the actual disposition was going to be. The information I received was that based on the wear and space considerations, the intention is to try to trade it in at the time of the purchase. But they, I was, I was told that depending on what the trade-in value comes at, if it's, if it's really low, there may be consideration to keeping it for parts, you know, for basically scavenging it for parts for Engine 4. But at this point, the intent is to try to trade it in as part of the purchase of the new apparatus.
My concern was apparatus floor space.
Exactly, yes.
I didn't want to see it parked up behind the DPW.
Exactly.
Alongside the other one.
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly. So I believe those are the, those were the questions, the specific questions that you had about the capital plan, and those are the answers that I've been able to get. And that really completes my update. The Finance Director was involved in another matter for most of the day, so I gave her the night off. She needs a night off, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any new business that we did not reasonably anticipate tonight? I don't know of any. Does anyone on Finance? A motion to adjourn Finance?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we're back in regular session. We have the committee reports from Committee on Appointments and Evaluations, minutes of July 2nd, 2012, and also the minutes from November 27th.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. This were the street acceptance, the district street acceptance, Sanderson Avenue, which is going for referral to the Planning Board and Board of Commerce.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion about referrals? Ned's gone. They all went to have a party. But this is for referrals, so this'll come back, so. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? And now, this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, $45,000 to be appropriated from the FY13 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance, or otherwise known as Free Cash, to the FY13 Legal Judgments account. Okay.
Second.
And I'm giving you the file number, it's 11512-576000, relative to Michael Hatch et al. versus City of Northampton, Massachusetts et al. So there's a motion, seconded. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Suspend Rule 14.
Second.
All those in favor of suspending rules?
Aye.
Second reading?
Second.
All right, second reading. Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstacles? It's passed. Cranky. This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, ordered that the following capital projects be appropriated from the General Fund FY13 Cash Capital Account, 19303-586300. This is in second reading. Do you want me to itemize it?
No, just itemize it.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? This is on the, upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, the following capital projects be appropriated from the FY13 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance, Free Cash. This is for Central Services, MPS, Fire, DPW, and DPW.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This also is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, $17,046.97 be appropriated to fund City Hall exterior modifications, including roof and front step repairs, and meet that, and to meet that obligation, reprogram funds remaining from the following completed projects.
Move to approve.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Can I move orders four through eight as a group?
Is there any objection? Okay, let's do four through eight. These are, these are all second reading of capital expenditures that we've already approved in first reading. One is for $545,000 to be appropriated for the purchase and equipping of a front line attack fire engine for the fire department, and meet that obligation, appropriate the following funds. A total also of $300,013 be appropriated for the purchase and equipping of a dump truck for the DPW, and meet that obligation, appropriation of $243,160 from the 13 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance. A new program, $40,362.23 from Account 3025091512 for the DPW capital vehicles, and $16,477.90 from Account 303591511 for DPW capital vehicles. Also, $20,000 be appropriated for the Spring Grove Cemetery Roof Repairs, and appropriate $11,894.31 from Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund, and reprogram $6,288.69 from the Account 19303-58581108, which is the Spring Grove Roof Repairs, and $3,817 from Account 3035080308, which is for DPW Roof Repairs, and then $500,000 from the FY13 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance be appropriated for the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Move to approve.
Second. Yes.
Piece of discussion, this is a question for the mayor. I believe last, the last, last year, you said that Free Cash would still have a little bit less than $1 million in it, after, even after this transfer?
When the, the transfer to the Capital Stabilization Fund, yes, we would still have a Free Cash balance of about 1.4 million.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, a little less than 1.5 million.
That's correct, yes. Although, obviously, you've also taken a vote to transfer another $45,000.
So, okay, it's 1.35 million.
Exactly, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor approving all of these?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Practically on the turnpike, Mary. This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz in the Community Preservation Committee, whereas the Historical Commission submitted an application to Community Preservation Act funding the State Hospital Fountain Project, and whereas the project leverages additional fund, public and/or private funds, whereas the fountain meets the definition of an historic resource defined in GL44B II, whereas the fountain has been determined to be a relic of significant history by the Northampton Historical Commission, and whereas on November 7th, 2012, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee- and whereas on November 7th, 2012, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend $75,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to be used to support this project. Now therefore be it ordered that $75,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the State Hospital Project, and that the grantee meet the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council, and that the park will be permanently protected through city ownership or a conservation restriction. Specifically, $75,000 is appropriated from the CPA Historic Preservation Reserve.
Move to approve.
Second.
homeowners toward maintaining it. It's a fairly straightforward, it's not a working fountain, it's a, it's a brick paved area, and so, so, so that will be one of the issues we'll need to resolve. Yes.
Okay, 'cause I'm, I, as I said last time, I don't mind restoring the fountain, but I do object to its isolated location, and I would hope that the Homeowners Association would step up and maintain it, since it's not something the general public's going to stumble into on a regular basis. So, I would hope they would at least be willing to do that much and take, take over the maintenance of the thing, 'cause it, it's not out where most people are going to see it. So, thank you.
Your suggestion is duly noted. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Counselor Tacy?
Yeah, I did a pretty unscientific poll in my ward, and overwhelmingly, I found no support for spending tax dollars on the fountain in Ward 7. I did run into a big supporter of mine today, outside of CBS, and I spoke with her at length, and she is a big supporter of it, and she's a good friend of mine. And I have to speak, I will vote no, because my constituents overwhelmingly do not support this. And I did vote to support it reluctantly last time, and I will vote no this time.
Any other discussion, questions on Counsel Freeman Daniels?
I think Counsel Murphy's points about location are well-taken, but I still agree that it's appropriate moral mobilization, so I will vote for approve.
Any, I'm, I'm sorry, this is a closed session now, so that, any other discussion? Does, do we favor a roll call on this?
Yes, please.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel Abad?
Yes.
No.
Counsel Stotter?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Tacy?
No.
It passes on second reading. And the funds are approved. It's upon the recommendation of the Office of Planning and Development, be it ordered the Sustainable Northampton Comprehensive Plan, set a policy of improving pedestrian infrastructure. And whereas Historic Northampton, or the Northampton Historical Society, has offered to sell a 19.2-plus-foot-wide strip of land connecting Graves Avenue with Bridge Street Elementary School, and whereas the land provides immediate opportunities for improved pedestrian and bicycle access to Bridge Street School, and is supported by both the current and past school principal, whereas the land provides longer-term opportunities for improved infrastructure serving the school, and whereas the land is not wide enough for a formal extension of Graves Ave., which would require additional land in future city council approval, and whereas the funds for this acquisition are already on hand and no new appropriations required. Now therefore be it ordered that the City of Northampton, acting through its mayor, is authorized to purchase such land and any related easements on adjacent properties subject to Historic Northampton pertaining the right of access across the property. Is there a motion?
Move to postpone to January 17th.
Is a motion to postpone to January 17th?
Move to approve.
That's the second thing, definitely. Any discussion on that? You would-
May I?
Yeah, please.
It, um, this was originally postponed because the Graves Avenue residents had a lot of concern over the motivation and the, out, the impact that this might have, and we're actually hosting a meeting of Graves Avenue residents and representatives from the Office of Planning and Development tomorrow, 6 o'clock at Bridge Street School. If anyone wants to join me on a Friday night, they're welcome. So, obviously, without hearing from the residents on Graves Ave., I'm uncomfortable. I, I hope the rest of the council is uncomfortable pursuing this.
Any other discussion or questions?
Yes. Counselor, I know I have some relatives in Ward 3, and it was in question, and I wrote down some notes here that some of the parents were concerned of, apparently, the parents driving them down Graves Avenue. Is that a problem?
That, I believe that's one of the concerns about this walkway, but I, I really wouldn't like to bring it up right now, because it's, we're not, we're not voting on it today, but I do believe that's a-
Okay, but I'm just asking.
I do believe, I agree with you, that's, that is one of the, one of the concerns, the Ridgewood Terrace effect, so to speak.
And thank you for your consideration of the color of the issue.
Thank you.
Let me know more discussion, the motion is to postpone till the next council meeting in January 17th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. It is- And this is upon the, upon, upon the petition of ten registered voters, an ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts, providing that the Code of Ordinances, City of Northampton, Massachusetts, be amended by revising Section 35-3.4 zoning map of said code, providing that Castle 18C-003716 be rezoned from rural residential to urban residential, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton, and the City Council assembled as follows, that Section 350-3.4 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts, be amended so that the map changes will be made as shown below, which you're not going to be able to see on the camera, but is available. Accept a motion or-
A move to postpone to-
I'll second that.
January 17th.
Is a motion to postpone. Do you want to clarify the-
Well, when we originally postponed this at the December 6th meeting, it was suggested that this would go-
Bodies, neither of which have taken this matter up, and so, I would hope we can take the time to still hear from those two other bodies regarding the issues that residents in the area brought up, and act at that point.
Counsel Tacy?
I have to agree.
This is non-debatable, right?
I'm sorry?
Move to postpone, a motion to postpone is not debatable.
Yeah, yeah, we're not debating, it's, I, what I was asked for was clarification. So, the motion is-
Can I, actually, can I clarify?
Please, yeah.
Counselor, do you want to commit this to Ed Lou?
It's already been, it's been permitted-
Oh, it hasn't-
Number six.
It's scheduled, it's coming up at the next meeting, so, next Tuesday.
Thank you.
So, all right, the motion's postponed. All those in favor of postponing till the 17th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Sorry.
So, it's postponed till the next council meeting, pending a report from Ed Lou and from the Board of Public Works. This, from Counselor, Mayor David J. Narckwitz, this is a, this, well, this is a first, actually, so this is, "Dear President Dwight and Honorable Members of the City Council, in accordance with Section 3-6 of the Northampton Charter, I hereby disapprove of the attached amendment to Section 312-33, the location of parking areas for municipally-owned or municipally-operated motor vehicles, parking restrictions at certain municipal buildings adopted by the City Council on December 20th, 2012. The reasons for my disapproval relate to the proposed amendment to Section 312-33A. That amendment would delegate direct authority and control of parking areas reserved for municipal vehicles to the Transportation and Parking Commission. Such delegation exceeds both the purpose and the powers of the, and the duties of the commission as enumerated in Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances pursuant to Section The commission's oversight of an on-street and off-street parking spaces, lots, and structures is limited to policy issues, with day-to-day authority for maintenance, operation, and repair of these parking systems, including the installation of signage, reserved for the executive branch through the Director of Central Services. I, I disapprove of this attempt to reassign control over these parking areas reserved for municipal vehicles. I respectfully request that the City Council refer this ordinance amendment back to the Ordinance Committee for further review. I stand ready to work with the council to resolve the aforementioned areas of concern so that a revised ordinance can be sent to me for approval. Sincerely, David J. Narckwitz, Mayor." What is the council's pleasure? Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Thank you. I, I realize this was initially my ordinance, and it's been vetoed, but I spoke with the mayor about this last week, and he and I had a, had a good conversation, and he's not here to represent his side of the story, so I can-
There you go, have at it.
But-
He left at his peril.
My, my opinion is, I think there's a matter, I think there's some disagreement between us about what this section of the, of the quote, code does. So, my suggestion would not be to refer it to the Ordinance Committee, but instead to ask the Ordinance Review Committee, which is basically the Ordinance Committee, but ask the Ordinance Review Committee to examine this, and, and, and just not, not, not to send it back to ordinance, but ask the Ordinance Review Committee to examine it. So, I don't know-
Make that a form of motion?
Yeah, so that's my recommendation, and I'd like to move that the ordinance, that we refer this to the Ordinance Review Committee.
Second.
Oh, well, that's true, good point, it hasn't been formed yet.
Well, so, so, then maybe we'll table, we will postpone this indefinitely until, and ask the Ordinance Review Committee to examine it.
Discussion? I wish the mayor were here, because I'm confused after, after why the two readings and the passage of this, that these concerns first came up. I'm just, I, I understand his reasoning, but I don't understand why it came up after this, after this council's already voted on it two times. And I have other questions as well, but-
Did Counsel Freeman Daniels, did that come up in his sense of saying-
Well, I was quite flattered to be the sponsor of a ordinance that has been vetoed, I think maybe the first time in-
Very first.
It might be the first in, in maybe a, in over a decade, it could-
Thus, thus, probably, it would establish status of the fabric.
Right, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna write my name on the desk now, but, but I think, I think what the mayor said to me, but again, he's not here to give his side of the story, but what he said was that he was focused on the C section of this, and that the, the minor amendments to A and B were not, he didn't even really think they were relevant, and didn't, probably didn't even see them until they reached his desk. So, I think that's, I think the C, we, we spent a long time on the C element, and the A and B were, to me, they were just afterthoughts, but that's-
Counsel- If, if you recall, that there was a whole string of ordinances relative to parking and changing the description of traffic and transportation, taking the mayor out, because the mayor was no longer there. So, there was a whole slew of these that all came through together, and, and that's what he indicated to me, was he'd missed a detail on this one, changing that authority. But there were a whole bunch of other changes we made that made it fine.
It just occurs to me that we're discussing the table to, a motion to table, so, once again, my, my bad-
This is, this is a postpone indefinitely.
Yeah, okay, so this is another post, well, the motion is to postpone indefinitely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? An abstentions? It is postponed indefinitely.
What, what information?
Sure.
So, it's postponed indefinitely, and, and, and that's, that's partially because there's no Ordinance Review Committee yet?
So, when the Ordinance Review Committee's formed-
We'll bring it back up.
Refer, I'll ask the president to put it back on the agenda, or he can do it without my asking.
Come to the magical point in our meeting where you get updates from the council president and committee chairs. I don't have any. I don't know if any of the- Oh, goodness. Yes.
Just from the Transportation Parking Commission, we, we're still open for nominations on the Parking Committee, so, if there are any members of the public out there, or the press that want to talk about how influential this committee's going to be, then please, uh-
I think it's very important, given that one of, one of the most contentious issues in this city is parking, which I actually always say is a blessing compared to other communities who have really, really big, big pressing issues. One of our most pressing issues is where we're going to put our damn cars, and I think that anyone who can contribute to, to help ease the stress would be greatly appreciated by this community.
Before Council President goes on much longer, I move to adjourn.
I second that.
Any discussion about the motion to adjourn? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have-